I know, I know. Call the meeting to order.
Two flags of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stand one nation under God indivisible was ever deemed unjust or wrong.
Please do mention for the invitation. Is anyone here from the United Methodist? Oh, there you are. Okay.
Not so far.
Yeah, you're not who I was expecting, but welcome, thank you.
We gather tonight with those who seek to do the work of making Fountain Hills a just, equitable, and fulfilling and safe community in which to live. May the leaders here tonight be guided by a commitment to fairness and compassion, always aware of the struggles of those in our community who are caught up in financial, family, and life circumstances that are difficult to bear. May their needs be remembered, not only as the official work of the town is conducted, but every day, as each of us make our way through our daily lives. We give thanks for opportunities to be in service and are grateful for those here tonight serving as leaders of our town. May grace, peace, and a vision for a better world be our companions on the journey. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Roll call please, sir. Mayor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Councilmember Lucey?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson? If anyone's here for items nine and ten, which was the Cresco Substate Housing LLC request for rezoning, that has been postponed until the August fifteenth council meeting at the request of the applicant. And now I have a proclamation to read for Red Shirt Fridays. Whereas since the year 2010, Fountain Hills Veterans of Foreign Wars, American Legion, and AMVAC have shown support for American servicemen and women by promoting Red Shirt Fridays in Fountain Hills. And whereas it is the desire of these organizations to reinvigorate this noble effort to honor servicemen and women who contribute to liberty and freedom in America and around the world. And whereas by wearing red every Friday, we are announcing silently that we are grateful to our servicemen and women for their bravery and sacrifice, and that we will not forget them. And whereas the red shirts are sponsored by the Veterans Guild of Fountain Hills, Arizona, and the shirt states, "We are free because of the brave," now therefore I, Mayor Linda M. Kavanaugh, do hereby once again proclaim each Friday in the town of Fountain Hills to be Red Shirt Friday and urge each and every citizen to honor American servicemen and women by wearing red on Friday. And I have a second proclamation honoring the late President Dr. Clinton Pachia of the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation. Whereas the town of Fountain Hills and the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation have lived and worked together as neighbors for many years. And whereas since the 1960s, Presidents Dr. Clinton and Pachia exhibited visionary leadership of the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation. And whereas Presidents Dr. Clinton and Pachia worked tirelessly to promote education, culture, health, and wellness, and economic opportunities. And whereas the leadership of Presidents Dr. Clinton and Pachia led to the betterment of both the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and the town of Fountain Hills. And whereas Presidents Dr. Clinton and Pachia's inspirational accomplishments will endure. Now therefore I, Mayor Linda M. Kavanaugh, mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, hereby proclaiming the town's gratitude and respect for the life and legacy of our friend and neighbor, Presidents Dr. Clinton and Pachia. And just a short time ago, before President Dr. Clinton Pachia passed away, I was honored to be invited to an event in celebration of his lifetime achievements. Digitaries from all over the state came to honor him. There were elected officials, leaders of other tribal councils, and from the governor's office. Dr. Pachia was a dear friend of mine, and he will be greatly missed. And now we will go on to the public appearance, presentations, introduction of the town of Fountain Hills by its chief, Randy Roberts.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, the person in the white shirt with the badge. He stepped forward. As you know, Randy has been our assistant fire chief since 2007, and is very familiar with our community as a longtime resident, as well as familiarity with fire service operations here. Randy comes from an extensive fire background with the city of Phoenix where he rose from the ranks of firefighter, engineer, captain, and acting battalion chief responsibilities. So I'm proud to announce that an appointment of Mr. Roberts as our new fire chief for Fountain Hills Fire Department.
Mayor and council, good evening to you, and thank you so much for this opportunity. And thank you for that very nice introduction, Mr. Buchanan. I want to express my gratitude to you for placing your trust in me in this position. It means a lot to me, and I certainly don't take it lightly at all. I also want to express my appreciation to you as a council for your wonderful support that you've given us recent times and in times past for public safety. It makes our job and our mission so much easier when we have such amazing support, and I want to thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Randy, and I know I speak on behalf of the whole council when I say we're excited to be working with you. Recognition of the town of Fountain Hills designation as a playful city USA.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. I'd like to call on Kathy Warrell from the Community Services Department to present an award for Fountain Hills designated as a playful city USA community.
Mayor Kavanaugh, vice mayor, and council. I'm honored to be here tonight to highlight one of our community's achievements. Fountain Hills has earned the recognition from a national nonprofit, Kaboom, as a 2013 Playful City USA community for our efforts to give children the childhood they deserve by providing ample opportunities and spaces for play. In the seventh year of this annual program, Fountain Hills has been recognized for the fourth year in a row. Fountain Hills is one of only twelve cities in Arizona to be awarded. Fountain Hills was selected for its outstanding dedication to play. The Fountain Hills Unified School District's recess policy currently requires that children in grades K through twelve only have a minimum of thirty minutes of recess. The town of Fountain Hills Community Services Department would like to work with the district to increase that amount to sixty minutes of activity with both structured and unstructured activities available for even the youngest students. We hope to work with some of the existing committees, like the Health Council or the Fountain Hills School District, to achieve such goals. In all, there are two hundred and thirteen playful cities that Kaboom has recognized this year. As one of the benefits of this award, we are eligible for grants towards repairing, replacing, and building new playground equipment in our city in the future. We are also looking forward to planning the fourth annual Fountain Hills Day of Play, which is organized in part by March Charno at the Times and the Moon Colón Club. It will be Saturday, September twenty first. Thank you so much for your support.
Congratulations, Mark, to you, and to our entire Parks and Recreation Department who are here sitting in the back. And now we have another recognition. Town of Fountain Hills designation as top booming suburb in Arizona as per the Caldwell Banker Real Estate Survey and the final installment of their best places to live.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, this somewhat came as a surprise, reading it online and in the paper. But as part of Caldwell Banker's Real Estate's National Best Places to Live Series designation for a top booming suburb in America, Fountain Hills was designated as a suburb in Arizona, the top point getter. Caldwell partnered with an independent contractor, Onboard Informatics, the leading provider of real estate information and technology, to identify the best places to live for these suburbs. And the scoring attributes included access to commercial amenities, proximity to good schools, community by car and community safety. It's a pretty distinct designation, as we all know that, you know, we all know that we live in one of the best places in Arizona, but it's nicely recognized nationally. How's that?
All right. Quarterly budget report by Deputy Town Manager Julie Betty for the fiscal quarter ending June thirtieth, 2013.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The presentation that you have before your meeting tonight is for the quarter ending June thirtieth, but it is actually for our fiscal year ending as well. It is, the final report will be presented to the council in October after the annual audit, so this is just the quarterly report. The total revenues for all of the funds is eighteen point five million dollars. This includes those funds that are restricted for a specific purpose. The general fund is thirteen point three million dollars, or seventy-four percent of the total. The HERF for the streets fund is the operating fund for streets, and it's one point two four million dollars, or seven percent of the total. The general fund is the main operating fund of the town. It pays for all general government expenses and operations except for the streets, and that includes our parks, our community center, town hall. Our general fund depends on two primary sources of revenue for operations. Our local sales tax, which is about six point eight million dollars in the general fund, or fifty-four percent of the budget. State shared revenues, which is our state sales tax and capacity vehicle license tax, is about thirty-eight percent, for a total of ninety-two percent of the operating fund. The remainder is made up of permits and licensing and fees. Compared to last year, our revenues are up about six percent, and a big portion of that comes from the state sales tax, which is up about twenty-one percent. In the general fund revenue, both the local sales tax and the state shared revenues are at a hundred percent of projections. Where we were a little short was in licenses and court fines, which are down about fifteen percent from the prior year. The state sales tax is up from last year, and it's about six percent more than what was budgeted, and you can see these charts that pretty much all of them came in a little bit over the budget. And again, these revenues are distributed to cities and towns based on the population of, compared to all the incorporated cities and towns in the state. Fifty-five percent of the general fund revenue comes from our local sales tax. This year, seven point nine million, which includes all funds, including the construction sales tax and the downtown tax. Last year was about seven point nine, so the increase is just a little bit under one percent. I'm looking at this, you can see that the retail, it remains flat compared to the previous year, but restaurants and bars activity, they're at historic highs. Six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars last year, which is higher than it has ever been in any other year. The highest we ever had prior to that was five hundred and eighty-two thousand, and that was in fiscal year '08. So the restaurant and bars seem to be, as a leading indicator, we hope, indicating that the community is, the economy's starting to pick off. This chart is the expenditures of the general fund, and the expenditures for fiscal year thirteen were down, and they were due to the budget cuts that were made for pavement management. Seven hundred and fifty thousand was transferred to the streets for resurfacing of the Zone Six pavement, which is in the northwest corner of the town, Golden Eagle Boulevard, that was done in last year. Seven hundred and fifty thousand taken from the vehicle license tax is now going to be from this point forward put over into streets for the pavement management program. You can see the breakdown by department, what percent each department is of the general fund. Again, public safety is usually the largest in most government budgets, and ours is no exception, between, with both Leaks and Fire, it represents fifty-one percent of the total. And all the general fund budgets last year were under budget, and again, the pavement management programs was accomplished with cuts. Total expenditures are one point five less than the previous year. The other funds, this is our other sets of books, other twenty-three sets of books. These are other funds that are restricted either by statute or by council action, and they can only be used for the specific purpose that they were created. The one restricted fund that is an operating fund is our Highway User Revenue Fund, which is our streets fund. It's funded from gasoline tax, and again, last year you can see the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the fund and will be from this point forward. Excluding the vehicle license tax, our HERF revenues were up three percent from the prior year, but down about sixteen percent from fiscal year eleven. HERF expenditures broken down, again, you can see the priorities for pavement management. Almost sixty percent of the budget is dedicated to the pavement management program. These funds are all restricted, including the downtown fund. In most of the funds, the revenue comes in for a specific purpose and is expended for that specific purpose. The exception is the downtown funds where the revenue has come in, but it's not entirely expended. And this is a chart of the expenditures of those restricted funds. Special revenue and capital budgets, we assumed that we were going to get grants, and therefore those are the big bars, but obviously we didn't get the grants, so we didn't make the expenditures. So in summary, the fund balances remain healthy. The fund balance meets all the town's financial policies. The general fund revenues were a little bit higher than last year, but about three point six percent lower. And approximately at the end of the year, about two hundred thousand of surplus general fund revenues per policy will be transferred to the capital projects fund, but again, that follows the audit after the audit is completed. And this is just a chart showing the fund balance per policy. The town maintains a rainy day fund as well as a reserve account. These are the town savings accounts that are there in the event of some unanticipated emergency. There's about two million dollars in development fees that can only be used for those projects that were included in the infrastructure improvement plan. And the downtown fund has about two point two million dollars in it at the end of the year, some of which is set aside for the avenue projects. And the capital budget has nine million dollars that is programmed to be spent over the next five years. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Julie. Any questions from council? Okay. Councilor Dickey.
Thanks, Julie. The one cent tax that, sales tax that went down, we didn't really, we didn't locally get that, even though we were like at nine point nine percent, it still just went into the state to be put into the state shared revenue. Do you see that, the fact that it did expire, having a problem next year on what we would anticipate getting from shared revenues on sales tax?
Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, according to the league, which does the projections and gets the information from the Department of Revenue, they're expecting that it's not going to have an effect on cities and towns. You were talking about our share of the state sales tax. They're anticipating that it's likely to go up.
Oh, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Julie. Wait, we have one more recognition. We're not done. It's a good month for us. Recognition of the town of Fountain Hills First Government Finance Officers Association Award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting for Year Ending June thirtieth, 2012.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The Government Finance Officers Association, what we refer to as CFOA of the U.S., sponsors this annual popular, popular annual financial report, or we call it a PAFER, which is distinct from our PAFER. It's a program that's open to governments at the state or local level. The objective is for the government to extract information from our PAFER report to produce high-quality reports specifically designed to be readily accessible and easily understandable to the general public and other interested parties that don't have a background in public finance. In order to participate in the PAFER program, the government must have received the CFOA Certificate of Excellence, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is the PAFER, for a report of the previous year or the current year. And the town did receive that award for fiscal year eleven, twelve. The financial information contained in this PAFER must be derived from the actual PAFER. This was the town's first submission that was intended to be a toe in the water to get feedback on how to submit a successful PAFER, and we were pleasantly surprised to learn that we were awarded the prestigious award. I'd like to acknowledge the huge contribution of one of the town's most valuable volunteers, Craig Riddelphy, who I don't believe he's here. He was supposed to be here tonight. He took an outline and an idea, and he created a report that met all the requirements for the award. Fountain Hills is only one of eight agencies in the state, meaning including the state, the county, and local, that have received the award, and we are proud to be included with that group. It is our goal to continue to create the PAFER and have it evaluated by the CFOA for the award. And this report is available on the town's website under Administration, and we got a really nice plaque that we'll put up.
Very nice, very nice. Congratulations to Julie and the entire finance department. And Craig was working today, so he always shows up for the work, but not the recognition. He's a great guy.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor Kavanaugh, just pointing out that Craig was volunteering.
Yes, I know. He volunteers every day, all day. It's amazing. I'm sure that some of you noticed that we're wearing these purple ribbons and probably wondering what they are, even though back in June, we recognized drowning impact awareness month. Actually, that month is for August, but we thought that we would do it in June at the start of the whole summer season, so today we're just, again, recognizing August as drowning impact awareness month, and thank you to our fire department and our police department for all that they do to keep us safe and keep the children safe. So, you know the saying, watch the kids around water. Now we'll go on to any calls to the public that we have.
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, then, it's on to the consent agenda. Consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes from June twentieth, 2013. Consideration of approving of Resolution 2013 dash thirty-six, abandoning certain public utility and drainage easements located at one one seven one one Spotted Horse Way. Consideration of approving of Resolution 2013 thirty-two, certain public utility and drainage easements, but retaining a cell communication easement located at one five seven two eight East Sycamore Drive. Consideration of approving Resolution 2013 dash forty, abandoning certain public utility and drainage easements located at one one eight one seven North United Jail Circle. Consideration of a final repla for a lot join at one six seven oh seven and one six seven one nine East Blast Trail Drive. Consideration of approving Resolution 2013 dash thirty-nine of the town Fountain Hills personnel policies and strategic amendment amended August first, 2013. Consideration of approving a special event, missile license applications submitted by the Fountain Hills and Lower Verde Valley Museum and Historical Society for the purpose of a fundraiser scheduled for Saturday, August tenth, 2013, from five to ten p.m. at the community center. And I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Mayor, come on.
And a second. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Lucey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
Now we're on to our regular agenda items. Number eight, consideration of appointing five commissioners and one youth commissioner to the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, also known as SAK, each for a term beginning on August first, 2013, and expiring on June thirtieth, 2015. I, Mayor Regent Kavanaugh, move to appoint Mr. Porter, Alan Magidine, Alex Brovan, Nancy Ordowski, Vina Sar, and Kate Domann as the youth commissioner, each to a term beginning on August first, 2013, and expiring on June thirtieth, 2015. Can I have a second, please? And any further questions on that?
No, ma'am.
And any council discussion? Okay, Owen Saber?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero?
Anyone who's here on that? Nancy, Nancy here? Anyone else here from the commission? Okay, Nancy's a new member. Nancy, thank you very much for volunteering your time, and to the other new members, and to the youth commissioner. And also welcome back Ms. and Alan, who have already served and who have agreed to serve again. So thank you, everyone, for all of the time that you're giving us once again on this very important commission. And now, as I said, nine and ten have been postponed until is fifteen thirteen, and that is continued at the request of the applicant. So we go on to number eleven, which is consideration of Resolution 2013 dash twenty-four, leveling upon assessed valuation of the property within the town of Fountain Hills sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2014. Ten, please.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, since nineteen ninety-one, the town of Fountain Hills has approved four bond issues for paving roads, construction of a library, museum, and purchase of a preserve open space. The debt service is repaid through add valorem property taxes. For fiscal year 2013 fourteen, debt service payment is one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, which will be submitted to Maricopa County to calculate the rate. Based on the 2012 secondary assessed valuation of Fountain Hills, it's three hundred and sixty-six million, three hundred and two thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. The tax rate is estimated to be about point oh two per one hundred of assessed value on the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2014. It recommended the mayor and council adopt Resolution 2013 dash twenty-four, adopting the tax levy.
Any council discussion, any questions for ten? Can I have a motion, please?
Mayor. Move to approve Resolution 2013 dash twenty-four, levying a property tax upon the assessed valuation of property within the town of Fountain Hills for the purpose of paying fiscal year thirteen fourteen principal and interest on bonds.
And a second?
Aye.
Were there any further questions on this item?
No, ma'am.
All right, and then Owen Saber?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero?
Number thirteen, discussion with possible actions relating to the proposed League of Arizona Citizen Town Resolutions to be considered for adoption by the 2014 Resolution Committee at their August twenty-four, 2013 business meeting held during the League of Arizona Citizen Towns Annual Conference.
Um, Mayor Kavanaugh, we missed twelve, number twelve. Item twelve, budget transfer.
Okay. Consideration of the budget, that is an important one. Consideration of budget transfer from special revenue fund miscellaneous grant line item appropriations to vehicle replacement fund in amount of two hundred thousand, six hundred ninety dollars and ninety-one cents for vehicles and equipment as scheduled, and the vehicle is replacement schedule.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, again, the purpose is to have a budget authorization for purchase of vehicles approved by the town council ordered in April. We ordered these vehicles in April, 2013. Well, the delivery of the vehicles fell after July first, 2013, but the generally accepted accounting practices, GAAP, I added Catherine Pepper, requires that assets be recorded on financial statements when they are received, not ordered. So therefore, a budget adjustment is necessary to carry forward the encumbrance from fiscal year thirteen to fiscal year fourteen for those vehicles that were not delivered to the town prior to July one.
Any questions for ten? Nope. And I get a motion on that one?
Mayor, come on.
And a second? Any further questions?
No, ma'am.
All right, Owen Saber?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero?
Now we go on to thirteen. Proposed we give Arizona- Proposed we give Arizona Citizen Towns resolutions to be considered for applica- for adoption two thousand fourteen Resolutions Committee at the August twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen business meeting held during the League of Arizona Citizen Towns Annual Conference, which is being held in Tucson this year.
But, Mayor Calhoun, members of the council, uh, again, you have in your council packet the proposed resolutions to be considered, um, for adoption by the two thousand and fourteen Resolutions Committee at the upcoming August twenty-seventh business meeting held at the, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference down in, uh, Tucson, Old Valley. Um, Mayor Calhoun represents the town on, on Fountain Hills for the Resolutions Committee. Uh, the packet is, is for your information and possible discussion of any of the items that you'd like to, to further discuss.
Yeah, we are already, uh, are joined on resolution number eleven, which is urging the Arizona State Legislature to stop future sweeps of private user revenue funds allocated to Arizona Citizen Towns and to restore her funding. And that's the one that we, we joined on, and, uh, let's see, does anyone have anyone in particular that they would like to discuss, or, no? Uh, I'm also going to be discussing there in particular, number seven, which is the procurement process that's been brought up, um, earlier in the year, myself and Councilman Lichey and Councilman Brown attended a meeting with, uh, some stakeholders, discussing some changes to the procurement process, and at that time, uh, we were, uh, unable to make any progress with them to change the way that they do it, and so I'm really glad that there are other, and other cities and towns that are also being affected by this, so perhaps together we might be able to get some legislative change. So, I will definitely be discussing this one and hoping that we can, they can change it from the current status of just discussion with the stakeholders, gradually moving it on to legislative action. Anything else, Councilmember Dickie?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the, uh, you know, I guess we would want to know if there was anything we didn't want to happen.
Mhm.
Um, so I do have a question, I don't know, maybe Andrew can help with that, the first two that allow greater flexibility or ease in annexing property into town, which, you know, obviously there'll be some towns that that would be good for, um, there are probably other towns like us that don't have as much of a opportunity or, or probably will not happen that will be annexing more into our town, so obviously this will affect the, the big pie when you think about the ninety-one cities and the way state shared revenue, um, is distributed. So, if you know what the motivation of this was, and do you see it being detrimental to a place like Fountain Hills where, um, you know, uh, we, we get smaller part of the pie every year anyway, just because we're not really growing, and do you see this as something that would be pretty minor, uh, effect on us?
Mayor Calhoun, uh, Councilmember Dickie, I, I don't know that we can really gauge what the potential revenue impact would be, because the number of county islands that are surrounded by cities and towns throughout the state are numerous. There are a lot of them that are small in population but large in value, like the Phoenix Country Club, that whole area around the Country Club, the county island, that probably wouldn't impact Fountain Hills' share of state revenue very much. Uh, others, however, are pretty populous and have a lot of bodies in them, you know, like Leisure World and, and Mason. You bring in a lot of residents, and numbers like that might have a big effect. So, I think there's no way to really gauge the, the revenue impact. Uh, in terms of, of value to the town, and there really isn't much of that either, because you just don't have the opportunity for annexation of this nature at all. This is really intended, those areas where they have residents literally across the street from each other, one's in and one's out, one's here, one's providing municipal services and the other one has to pay for them. Uh, much more acute in places like Gilbert, where a person across the street, one side will have municipal fire service and the other one has to pay for fire service through subscription, or more recently, the county, county island fire district has informed. So, it's, it's trying to address some of those areas of conflict rather than, um, the smaller pockets. This is more of a larger area where they have, uh, true difference in services provided to people who probably contribute the same, the same amounts as, as to your town's tax base.
Mhm. Anything further?
Uh, well, I, I imagine there that there'll be a lot of discussion about this, and, um, I'm unsure if the entire league will, you know, still all end up wanting to push for this because, uh, you know, but if they do, um, then it'll go through the legislative process and there'll be a lot of discussion on that. So, and not time to say we should just, you know, stamp our teeth or anything, but I'm just wondering and looking at the, the effect that that could have, um, there was a, we, we-
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, yes, go ahead.
Mayor Calhoun, Mr. Council, Councilmember Dickie. Um, a- as I think the town attorney talked about with the, uh, potential county islands that are out there with some impact with increased population, uh, you know, you've got other areas in the, in the state that, that are, I guess, maybe more direct to your question. If you look at town of Queen Creek, um, there's eighty thousand people on the other side of them, the Sun Incorporated, that if they start annexations, yes, our pop- that population would increase for them. Half of Tucson, million people, half of them is in McCounty. So, if they start annexations there, uh, you'll see, you could see that pie get smaller, um, on those areas, but, I mean, that's, I think that's pretty much directing to your, your question specifically.
And right now, one and two are merged, they're supported by Oral Valley, Huma, Boher City, Morana, and Wittenburg, and the subcommittee recommended approval. So, the way they're working the process is if we have any objection to those that have already been approved by the subcommittee, then I ask to have that pulled off for separate discussion.
Oh, okay, thank you, Mayor. So, basically that, um, you know, without really getting into it, I don't know what kind, maybe they're getting sort of nonsense roadblocks in front of them, which I don't want to, you know, continue with that, but it's really hard to know what exactly they're talking about, about making it easier and more flexible. So, um, I imagine if people that don't want to be annexed start to think it's too easy, that they will have their say.
Okay. Any other resolutions, uh, Councilmember? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, item number thirteen, I think, is, um, important to, um, the town Fountain Hills, it has been important in, in the past, so I'd like to ask Mark, um, if he could come up and talk to us about his experience with heritage funds, and if it's added value to the town of Fountain Hills and how, and then also, I'd like to have the town attorney address the status of, of those funds in the legislature.
Councilmember Lichey, um, as I put in my comments, uh, we have been the beneficiary for a number of years, uh, both since I came here and preceding my coming here. Um, that's why I put those comments down. Um, we have been very successful in getting a number of grants, those typically matching grants, um, it allows us to leverage approximately half of the funds, uh, so that we can do a project, uh, with local capital being half of what we necessarily have to complete a project, so it's pretty, pretty important. Um, we also are, as you know, uh, have a couple of projects left to finish in our purse, most notably the last, hopefully the last stage of Fountain Park. Again, if those funds were available, we would stand a very good likelihood of potentially receiving those funds as well. So, it's not only what we've been able to accomplish in the past, but what we can potentially accomplish in the future as well.
Okay, Mark. So, in, some of those projects have been very difficult, given our, our limitations on revenue to accomplish without those funds, so, and we all know where we're at revenue-wise, it's, you know, leveling off, but diminishing from, from state shared revenue, TPC, et cetera. Um, so, thank you for that. I had an opportunity to read your report, and I know that you had weighed in on that, so I appreciate your input. Uh, Mayor, if I may, uh, address the town attorney. In a little history, where it was at, where it's at now, um, where are things at in the legislature with that? Was that a, a voter-approved, um, initiative, or, just, just help me out with a little background and history on that?
Uh, ma'am, Mayor, Councilmember, I don't honestly recall if the statutory provisions were an initiative. I don't believe they were. I think this was a, a provision put in place by the legislature, but I'm not certain of that. Um, I can tell you, though, that it really doesn't change the equation in terms of, uh, the legislature's view of funds are, are sweepable that much, whether or not it was a voter initiative, except for shared revenue. That seems to be one more challenging. In this case, I think what the, the league's position is, and, and this resolution is intended to do, is much like the HERF resolution, is just to say, restore it to the statutory guideline. Now, the statute was created to create this fund, and we have numbers, just put it back to what it was. And that's the position that most of the committees that are on here, you can see, are smaller towns, that need the heritage funds in order to try and establish park systems and upgrade it and otherwise, so it's not so much of a, of a historic battle as it is a trend that is sought to be reversed.
Mayor, if I may, um, so Andrew, um, the folks that are, that are on board with this are looking at restoring to previous levels, um, not to put you on the spot, but where are we at right now with that? Is it being reduced by, you know, fifty percent, eighty percent, or, um?
You know, I, I wish I could tell you exactly what the amount was, but I thought it was a complete sweep the last time it happened.
Okay.
I think it was a hundred percent the last time it was swept, and I don't know if that was different last year or not. So, I, it, it has been complete when it's been swept.
Okay, very good. Uh, Mayor, if I may, um, I'd like to invite council to, to think about, um, having you as our representative, um, advocate, um, for the town of Fountain Hills and half the league conference when that, when that's especially comes up.
Yeah, let me just answer that, though, that they have merged that with one of the others, which is probably the one that caused that not to be passed before, with the development task legislation to ensure the viability of Arizona state parks, including but not limited to allowing municipalities to enter into long-term leases of state parks. And that seemed to cause some problems last year with how much do they expect the towns or cities to contribute, and who would have control, um, and that was the issue. So, I could attempt to have that, uh, the heritage fund one pulled away from the other one, because right now, both of them together are recommended for approval, uh, but I'm not sure, uh, together if that will fail, but I could do that.
I believe you'd find something, Mayor. I believe you'd find some, um, some support and allies from those that are signed on board with that, and I, I recall that discussion last year, and I would agree with you, that, um, separating them, um, may increase the possibility, but, uh, we, we take, we've taken a significant hit, and so it'd really be nice to see if those, those funds in fact could be restored. Thank you.
Absolutely. Councilmember Dickie?
I mean, I'm really glad you said that, because that one about being a partner with the citizen towns, with, um, it's, it sounds like surrender, you, you know, it sounds like we're just saying, okay, we don't expect the state to maintain state parks anymore, so let us. And I know that Jason and other states have reason for that, because they bring in people, you know, the, the ring, the, the bridge there and everything, but, um, but again, to, and I don't know the details of what they have in mind, but to say, let us do it, it's, it's just taking on something to a town, to, in order to keep a state park open, so I'd really like it also if that could be executed out of that.
Right, 'cause they don't say, in the end, who pays for what, and then if the state turns around and says, okay, you want this park, you, okay, now you got it, that's it, we're, we're out of it, and then the city or the town, uh, has to take on the total responsibility of it. So, they don't, they don't quite explain everything in these resolutions, so if they do pass and they do go on to the legislature, that's when they, they get them completely, so, so we'll keep an eye on it. Anything else? Okay. All right, now, my fourteen, which is, anything else that the council has, or anything that ten has? No? Okay, then a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Any questions? And, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.